About 10:14, 17, and 10:28, 17, which I signed. And extends vouchers for Verizon Wireless on 10:25, 2017, which I signed. That was it. What happened to your other? That was it?
That was it for that one. No final dictation.
So we have some appearances this evening. John Salter, A.I.R., for proposed lot line change between 6th, 8th, 1st Street. Owner Salter and 6th Central Street owner Rogers. Steven? Steven? What's your name?
William Holt.
William Holt.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
There were different places.
Yeah, the other. Okay.
Is it? Did it start with Mr. Salter's sale? Oh, it's the last year. That's why in August. And there's some happenings that we discovered at this driveway. Number 6th, 8th, 1st Street, way over the line. It's about 10 feet. So we asked him what he can do and try to find a way of what we're missing. And see if it landed with the store. And Kristen, please. I'm showing the driveways for both. The driveway and the side door. What you see on the wall, he does his assessment on this. On the wall, here, this wall. That's the original walkway. It's going to be a bend.
And power.
Definitely. What we did is we're going to swap the lots. We'll have a land power via Leak area, both 780 square feet. So that Mr. Salter will get the 780 square feet along here. Cut it. On the driveway. Also, we can do the frontage, the required frontage. If he doesn't have it, it's going to come from the nonformal, it's just a nonformal lot. It's 700 square feet of frontage. He has sufficient areas, 12,656. And the pool land swap will not change areas of either lot. Both regional areas. And Mr. Salter will get the 780 square feet right back here. This is back there, so he was happy to get that and trade for the front.
So what instigated this analysis? He was interested in selling or?
In selling the property, we needed a survey.
Okay. And during the survey, you discovered this?
They suspected the driveway might be over. Hope they landed in. Mr. Salter suspected it and discovered.
When was his property last sold? Why wasn't it picked up then? Do you have any?
It's an old lead, so it's probably back in the 70s maybe.
Well, Robert couldn't have since then as well.
Yeah, I might have. I think maybe he was trying to avoid people. So we may hold it.
Was this a Parsons house?
Yes.
The one in the corner?
Yeah.
Somebody had a baby.
Yes. So we look, we look at this, that's the upstairs, that's the up front. This up in the back. People have walls because of the grades.
And so all that's really happening is that he's selling the property. The other property's not being sold.
Right. Right now. Probably the, the survey that we're doing, we also.
Was there anything else to tell us?
Uh, no, there's been a lot of discussion about this particular plan, but it's, you know, the frontage is conforming in the area, already was conforming, and all the other requirements have been met.
George? Bill? So we need a, a motion?
To endorse.
To endorse?
Yes.
And not accept?
Endorse.
Endorse. And what exactly are we endorsing?
Uh, the approval not required plan.
Okay.
I agree to endorse the approval not required plan covering premises at 8th 1st Street and 6th Central Street, Newbury. I think that's enough.
Any, okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any comment on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're done. Pretty simple.
Okay, so that appears after four days. And yeah, we wanted to sign.
I was just, I'm starting just to overview and interpret a little bit. This way.
If they don't accept it, I don't think it's going to work.
No. No. No way of anything that's deeply based on all of this.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty.
We have two here. One down there.
That's it. That's it.
What's that? It's not really in paper. You're doing everything except switch.
Yeah, we also decided how many, seeing how you're having four days actually.
Yes. Yeah. You. Thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
Mr. Berry, informal discussion of potential OSRD at 15 and 17 Coleman Road. Welcome.
Good evening.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. My name is Brad Latham. I'm the attorney for Alan Berry of C.P. Berry Homes. And Charlie Ware is a professional engineer. We're here in advance for refining an open space residential development to discuss the concepts and to describe what we'd like to do in the future. As you probably know, Alan Berry was the developer for Caldwell Farm. This would be a smaller version of what that is, which I think worked out well for the town. We hope it did. What's involved here is property number 1517 Coleman Road. It's owned by the Woodbury family. And the objective is to have 26 age restricted housing on the property, the upscale, upscale housing. The two-thirds of the site remain as open space. Would be protected by a conservation restriction, so there'd be permanent preservation of that open space.
What percentage, excuse me, of the property would be preserved? What percentage?
Two-thirds of the site. It's about 32 acres in total. So that'd be 27 acres would be preserved.
And how much of that is upland?
Pardon?
How much of that is upland?
I'll let Charlie describe it if I may. You want to go beyond my level of knowledge.
Okay.
And as we described, we met with the selectmen before because this is under Chapter 61 8 restriction. The significant monetary benefits to the town, we figured that one-time permitting fees would be about $160,000. And the annual tax benefit to the town would be about $200,000 or more. And of course, it doesn't impose the obligations on the town, no impact on the school system. So I'm going to ask it this time of Charlie to give you some particulars and answer questions that you folks in the county. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Charlie Ware. I'm with Meridian Associates. This first sheet that I was going to show you is actually, there's a couple of reasons for this sheet. Number one, it's the yield plan. It's the, this is what a standard subdivision would look like that would be in full compliance. It's, I think there's almost, we've got almost 3,000 square feet of roadway, and then the individual lots which need zoning. That's not what we want to do. The other reason I'm showing you this map is that we've got the Soil, National Resources Conservation Service soils map on here. Before I get back to that, I'd like to show you the plan that we'd like to do, which is in the reference, the question was just asked about wetlands. Let's say of the open space, I'd say that probably north of like 60% of the open space is outside of wetlands. I'd say that probably maybe about 20% of the site is wetlands. You can see the wetlands in this, this blue, these wetlands down in this corner and wetlands to this area. So instead of developing the entire site, we would, this existing homes in this area, design, design a small plot of homes here and then additional plot of homes in this area. And then the rest of the balance of the site would be this all this green with all the open space. So I think it's about 60% open space, including those wetlands. The first step that we would, again, this is, I understand, this is very much preliminary in seeking your input. One of the things that's come up is how we go about justifying the individual, individual lots. There has been some soil testing done on the site, but overall, we were hoping that this committee, that this board would consider utilizing the soil maps, which are published by the National Resources Conservation Service to, for example, we've got, you know, a fine sandy lawn, which is defined in these areas. We have, it's a Charleston Rock Outcrop, but it's with a hollows complex. In my, my experience, usually you'll see shallow ledge in areas, and then in other areas, we'll scoop down, you'll find soils in those pockets. That's why they call it a complex. So for example, all of those soils generally, the anticipation would be that if we were testing, that we would find good soils in those areas that would pass. The areas that we don't have good soils would be where we're showing yellow, which are shown throughout these areas and obviously the wetlands. So we were hoping that going, coming to this board, it's for guidance to see if it would be acceptable to use those soils maps for justification of the yield plan. That's probably the one thing we'd like to get some direction from the board tonight. Is that giving, you want to add to that, Alan? Or is that pretty much?
Yeah, I think we're just trying to see whether, you know, this concept of determining, you know, the viability of the yield plan, obviously, we're not going to build it, but we want to try to see if this, how it works. And if it does, then we can go.
How many units are affected by being in the yellow and in the green?
Well, I think we, I think that we would be able to get, well, this, this, I think we could get all the lots if we take away the yellow and the green. For example, 26, there is an area outside of 26 which has, which has, you know, soils that are outside that. Same way, same way with 20. Lot four, for example, has area back in, in this corner, which has soils that are outside those areas. So that's, you know, we could even sketch on where we could place, you know, individual septic systems, but there's, I mean, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, really eight lots, for example, that are affected.
Well, that's a good question, Seth. Are you looking at individual systems instead of a?
No. This is only for the yield plan.
When you get to think, you're going to, you're going to do a.
We're good. Yeah, we'll do a, when we get to this concept, we would do, it's actually shown in this plan. We would actually, because we're bifurcating the wetlands, we would do one system on one side of the wetlands.
What kind of system would you put? What is it?
Hasn't been designed yet, but the Woodberrys, I have Camick to go through and do perk tests, determine, you know, and is there all approved by the Board of Health, determine where the systems could go, and they determine those areas based on the perk test and how big the field would have to be to serve that many units. So they were, Camick already did that for the Woodberrys. So we're just kind of going to the next step and saying, okay, well, first, before we can even get here, we have to make sure that the yield plan is acceptable to the planning board. And then if it is, then we go to this one, and of course, we'd have to go to the Board of Health for the.
Okay, then, you're right. And before we do this plan, we go back to the yield plan. Let's take it out. Martha, what's your question?
I think I, I feel more comfortable if it were clear that each of those lots had some good soil where you could probably get, get a septic system, even if you didn't do a perk test in age one.
Well, we could certainly add that to the plan to show, you know, where a standard system could go outside of the areas where NRCS is.
Because I heard what you said, that some of them were, did you say all of them have some area that has decent soil or just some of them have some?
No, all of them have, have what we're going to.
All of the lots have at least one section which is decent soil.
That's correct.
But is the one that you just showed me, the smallest one where it looks like it's maybe a tenth of the total?
Yeah, that one's probably the most difficult one. That's probably why I'm pointing that one out. But we could certainly put a system, you know, in that area, for example.
And where would the house go?
The house would go next to there. The house would go there.
So you're going to put the house in that?
Well, yeah, that's, again, that's the yield. I, I.
But at the yield?
The yellow, the yellow is the poorly drained soil. So, you know, as far as the house, it wouldn't make a difference.
Right. But would that house be totally in the buffer zone or?
Um, it would be in the buffer zone, but it would be outside of any restricted area. We would keep it, the regulation.
Keep it out of the build?
Weapons. We would keep, of course, we would be, we would have to keep it out of the build.
So what's your yield? How many units?
20, is it 26?
And the total acreage of the site is?
1232.
32?
1232.
Does that include the portion that's in rally?
No, that's not including that.
It's not included?
No, that doesn't, that's not.
I think they actually, 35.7 acres, I think, in Newbury. And out of that, it's about almost 60% of it would be upland in open space. So it exceeds the 50% required by the VILR.
Are you looking for an opinion from us or is it just guidance from us?
Well, before, this is, we're in our due diligence period with the Woodberrys, so we want to do this first seat, you know, this 26 homes. This plan is actually, the base plan is actually done by Camick too for the Woodberrys, so we're just kind of expanding off of that, but we're looking to see if.
So, Martha, you've walked the site?
I have.
I mean, from, I haven't, so, you know, maybe you can inform us a bit. What, what's your sense of the reasonableness of this?
I mean, it's, it's a beautiful site. And, you know, I'd say it's probably pretty, pretty reasonable. And I am concerned about, I'm just kind of wondering, for the, for yield purposes, is there any way to, to reconfigure the lot so that you could?
Get a little more?
Get, get a little bit more.
Get a little fuzzier than, than that.
Yeah, that seems, seems.
Then again, I, you know, I pointed to that one on purpose.
That was good.
That's our worst case scenario.
That was good of you to do that.
You know, because once you get outside of that, you know, most of these lots, you know, 20, those two are probably kind of difficult, but then 21 is a large area, 17 acres in existing home. But this is a large area, so it's really only two lots that are.
Yeah, see, I don't really have a problem with getting to your eventual number. I mean, it's just really how you get there that we can justify.
Yeah.
So you need to play around with this a little more.
Yeah.
Because it looks like, it looks like you've got, you know, more than enough area and more than enough land.
The important thing is, is that you, you folks are comfortable with us using the NRCS maps.
Yeah, I mean, we could do, you know, some of the lots, you know, but Charlie was pointing out to, you know, that had small and, too small areas for, for percalan is, you know, maybe eliminate a couple, a couple of lots on the yield plan.
Yeah. Right.
But I think your main purpose tonight is to see if, you know, this method of determining the yield plan.
And we think it's reasonable. You're, you're getting some, aren't you rehabbing some?
The farmhouse, yeah.
The farmhouse? You got some density bonus, you got a density bonus, though?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Kristen, you like?
Yeah, not yet. Okay.
I, I wasn't sure the process of.
Yeah, not yet. We're just taking testimony from them and then we'll open it up for comments. Okay?
Thank you.
I can't remember. Is this on bifield water? Are you doing wells?
Bifield water.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about that separation?
Yeah, that's correct.
How accurate are the maps that you're using for soils? Plus and minus what?
NRCS?
Yeah.
They're pretty good. They're pretty good. I mean, they, you certainly, they're not perfect, but my experience has been, what they say the soils are, I usually go out there and test and you'll find something pretty close to it.
In the proposed septic fields, which I, I saw on the other one, and they might not be found, is all of them, the hollows complex?
Um, those are, I believe, yeah, those are, those are in the hollows complex area. And, but there has been soil testing done specifically in those areas, so it is probably a good point that maybe in the very area where we, you know, there's a mix of ledge and that hollows complex, if good soils were found in those areas.
And how many test fits were done with the, the health agent?
I, there was a lot that Camick did with the Board of Health. Get the exact number. And they could, basically, they kind of went around and then they focused on the best areas to make sure they get a large enough area that could perk for, you know, the two sides of the, the wetlands.
And I guess, guess, just speaking for myself, I'd sort of like to talk with our health agent about it and also maybe just check with Joe to see whether he's in agreement that those soils should be.
Okay.
But that's, does any?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, Joe, Joe is the expert we have, will rely on, on this kind of data. So, and then, not to put these guys off, I mean, but can we get that to them, you know, within a couple of weeks that they get Joe's opinion and the Board of Health's opinions have been, waiting too long?
Yeah, but I guess, I guess the question would be if, if they're both okay with it, would you?
Sure. I'm okay. If the Board of Health and if Joe Sowak is okay with it, I'm okay. Okay? So we'll proceed that way with that. We'll get our technical assistance on that. Do you, in all your work, when you do, you from Caldwell to Bartlett Beach, et cetera, do you always use a combined septic system or have you ever used a mechanical kind of system?
Well, Caldwell Farm has a, one leach field. We put in a, Clearwater Industries put in a Waterloo biofilter, which is a mini treatment plant. It's all underground. You don't even see it before we went in there, because we just didn't want to deal with your failure on it. We did the same thing at Baton Ridge and Hamilton and English Commons and Topsfield. We're doing one right now in Topsfield, it's called Rolling Green, and it has three small leach fields for 30 units, so about 10 units per, per leach field. So it's a little bit different, you know, it's not really big enough for a treatment plant.
Yeah. So what do you think is the, well, is there a magical number that all of a sudden a treatment plant makes sense?
Um, no, I mean, a lot of times it depends on soil conditions and.
Right.
You know, soil, soil conditions, you know.
So it is on a case by case basis.
On purpose, you know, it's best to use that, because then, you know, the leach field, all it's taken in is clean water, not, not regular gray water like you'd see in normal septic system.
Want to go to the, to your proposal? Do you have any questions on this? Do you have any questions? One of the questions that I've got, which is much broader than the site work at this point in time, is I know that you focus on projects that are over 55. Believe it or not, the planning board's not enamored with them. Because the town is losing population.
Yeah.
We're losing our school age population. We're losing young families who can't afford to move here. And so our projections, so for the Newbury Elementary School are that they'll decline by about 15 to 20% in the next 10 years. And for Triton, they're even more severe. So it's a concern that some of us have. We know that everyone throughout history has talked about, well, you have to have the projects you've done because they don't put a burden on, on the taxpayers. We're not 100% certain of that. And so my question to you is, are you open to doing other kind of housing that's not age restricted?
Yeah, I prefer not to because you're opening up your market to all ages.
Right, so you.
But I don't think the VILR, I think you have to be either, I think you have to have senior housing in order to meet the, the OSRD for condominiums.
I don't think so.
No?
No. So I can double check, but I don't think that's a requirement.
That's, but that, is that your interpretation of it?
Oh, well, that's my recollection. We did Caldwell Farm.
Right, but it's, I, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take close to the.
It's not my understanding of why, that would be, it would be unusual to have a, a, a design criteria tied to how old you are. I'm just, do you see what I'm saying? You know what I mean?
I think I just kind of went on to get Caldwell Farm, but I think the difference there may have been that it was multifamily buildings.
Could have been.
These are going to be single family.
Single family detached.
So, you know.
George, is yours family, this is Colby Farm, Colby, Colby Village?
Single family.
And, but is yours age, age restricted?
Yes. Yes. I, I'll reread through the.
Well, if you, if you would like to think about it, I think that's all I asked you to do.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'd rather not have age restricted, you know, your market.
Is it, is it the board's feeling that town meeting would be receptive to a change if necessary?
We have to work on it. Yeah. Because all, all this information is coming out of our master plan process where we're just kind of finishing up an awful lot of it, that the demographic projections are quite startling for us. And so at the same time that we're seeing a decline in school age population and those 18 to 34, we're seeing a dramatic increase in the over 65. And I just don't think that's healthy. We're the old guys.
Speaking of old guys, we want people to participate.
Doesn't sound so old anymore, though.
We want people to participate in town activities. And we found that people living in age 55 are ready to, but.
The main reason that we do senior housing over 55 is because that's what all the zoning VILR is a lot.
No, we understand. Or, or they, or the towns encourage them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and we understand that.
It's good tax income and.
And no cost.
No school kids, so.
And so this is not something which is, I'd say broadly understood on the part of all town members, but it's something that we, as we, we're just finishing up the master plan process of looking at housing and looking at economic development. And this is one of those things that's kind of staring us in the face.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I raise it. You're the, you're the first one to come in.
Yeah. I'd say I'd rather have it, you know, no research.
Anybody else have any other thoughts on this? We'll open up to questions.
I got a question, just out of curiosity, but what price range are you thinking about?
Right now, I'm thinking it's probably going to be like around 700, low sevens. The problem now is.
That's another problem we're dealing with.
Yeah, but new construction, it's almost impossible to get to the points that I know you're thinking about because you can take an existing home, big huge house, you can't duplicate that same house anywhere near what they're selling for. So new construction's hard to make a board.
We know.
Sometimes impossible.
Anybody in the audience would like to comment? Yes? Name and address, please.
Thank you. Kristen Grabson with it, 28 Alstair. Some of my questions or partial questions were asked by you and answered, but I was just curious if what's customary for approving a yield, is it, is NRCS remote soil maps customary in other developments, whether it was Caldwell Farm or other developments that the board has seen?
What we've done for Caldwell Farm, we, we did, it was a represent, I believe it was a representative number of perk tests that, you know, gave the board a level of comfort.
And are those soil, it sounds like there have been soil tests done by Camick, and whether that information could be provided on the map relative to the lots could be useful?
Yeah, what Camick did is they kind of dug holes around and tried to find the best areas, you know, for the, the common leach fields.
Yeah.
And then, once they found it, they focused in on.
How accurate are the maps that you're using for soils? Plus and minus what?
NRCS?
Yeah.
They're pretty good. They're pretty good. I mean, they certainly... They're not perfect. But my experience has been what they say soils are. I usually go out there and test and you'll find something pretty close to it.
In the proposed septic fields, which I saw on the other one, and they might not be final, is all of them host... the Hollis complex?
Those are, I believe... Yeah, those are in the Hollis complex area. And, but there has been soil testing done specifically in those areas. So it is probably a good point that maybe in the very area where we... There's a mix of ledge and that Hollis complex, if good soils were found in those areas.
And how many test pits were done with the health agent?
There was a lot. Kamit did with the Board of Health. Get the exact number. And they could... Basically, they kind of went around and then they focused on the best areas to make sure they get a large enough area that could park for, you know, the two sides of the wetlands.
And I guess, just speaking for myself, I'd sort of like to talk with our health agent about it and also maybe just check with Joe to see whether he's in agreement that those soils should be...
Okay.
But that's... Does any...
No, I think that's fine. I mean, Joe is the expert we have, will rely on, on this kind of data. So, and then, not to put these guys off, I mean, but can we get that to them, you know, within a couple of weeks that they get Joe's opinion and Board of Health's opinions? So they're not waiting too long.
Yeah, but I guess the question would be if they're both okay with it, would you?
Sure. I'm okay. If the Board of Health and if Joe Sawak is okay with it, I'm okay. Okay? So we'll proceed that way with that. We'll get our technical assistants on. Do you, in all your work, when you do, you from Caldwell, Department of Reach, et cetera, do you always use a combined septic system or have you ever used a mechanical kind of system?
Well, Caldwell Farm has a, one leach field. We put in a, Clearwater Industries put in a Waterloo biofilter, which is a mini treatment plant, it's all underground, you don't even see it. Before we went in there, because we just didn't want to deal with failure on it. We did the same thing at Baton Rouge and Hamilton and English Commons and Topsfield. We're doing one right now in Topsfield, it's called Rolling Green. And it has three small leach fields for 30 units, so about 10 units per leach field. So it's a little bit different, you know, it's not really big enough for a treatment plant.
Yeah. So what do you think is the... Well, is there a magical number that all of a sudden a treatment plant makes sense?
Um, no, I mean, a lot of times it depends on soil conditions and...
Right.
You know, soil conditions, you know...
So it is on a case by case basis?
It's best to use that because then, you know, the leach field, all it's taking in is clean water, not regular gray water like you'd see in normal septic system.
Want to go to the, to your proposal? Do you have any questions on this? One of the questions that I've got, which is much broader than the site work at this point in time, is I know that you focus on projects that are over 55. Believe it or not, the planning board's not enamored with them. Because the town is losing population.
Yeah.
We're losing our school age population. We're losing young families who can't afford to move here. And so our projections, so for the Newbury Elementary School, are that they'll decline by about 15 to 20% in the next 10 years. And for Triton, they're even more severe. So it's a concern that some of us have. We know that everyone throughout history has talked about, well, you have to have the projects you've done because they don't put a burden on the taxpayers. We're not 100% certain of that. And so my question to you is, are you open to doing other kind of housing that's not age restricted?
Yeah, I prefer not to because you're opening up your market to all ages.
Right, so you're...
But I don't think the bylaw, I think you have to be either... I think you have to have senior housing in order to meet the OSRD for condominiums.
I don't think so.
No?
No.
I don't think so. I can double check, but I don't think that's a requirement.
But is that your interpretation of it?
Oh, well, that's my recollection. We did Caldwell Farm.
Right, but it's, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, I'll take close to the...
It's not my understanding of why... That would be, it would be unusual to have a design criteria tied to how old you are. I'm just, do you see what I'm saying? You know what I mean?
I think I just kind of went on to get Caldwell Farm. But I think the difference there may have been that it was multifamily buildings.
Could have been.
These are going to be single family.
Single family detached.
So, you know...
George, is yours family, this is Colby Farm, Colby Village?
Single family.
And, but is yours age restricted?
Yes.
I'll reread through the bylaws.
People like to think about it. I think that's all I ask of you to do.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, I'd rather not have age restricted.
Okay.
They're good, they're market.
Is it, is it the board's feeling that town meeting would be receptive to a change if necessary?
We have to work on it.
Yeah.
Because all this information is coming out of our master plan process, where we're just kind of finishing up an awful lot of it. That the demographic projections are quite startling for us. And so at the same time that we're seeing a decline in school age population and those 18 to 34, we're seeing a dramatic increase in the over 65. And I just don't think that's healthy. We're the old guys.
Speaking of old guys, we want people to participate in town...
Doesn't sound so old anymore, though.
We want people to participate in town activities. And we've found that people living in age 55 are great at...
The main reason that we do senior housing over 55 is because that's what all the zoning bylaws allow.
No, we understand. Or they, or the towns encourage them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and we understand that.
It's good tax income and...
And no cost.
And school kids, so...
And so this is not something which is, I'd say broadly understood on the part of all town members. But it's something that we, as we, we're just finishing up the master plan process of looking at housing and looking at economic development. And this is one of those things that's kind of staring us in the face.
Yeah.
So that's why I raised it. You're the first one to come in.
Yeah. That's you. I'd say I'd rather have it, you know, no restriction.
Anybody else have any other thoughts on this? We'll open up to questions.
I got a question, just out of curiosity. What price range are you thinking of?
Right now, I'm thinking it's probably going to be like around 700, low sevens. The problem now is...
That's another problem we're dealing with.
Yeah, but new construction, it's almost impossible to get to the points that I know you're thinking about because you can take an existing home, big huge house, you can't duplicate that same house anywhere near what they're selling for. So new construction's hard to make a board.
We know.
Sometimes impossible.
Anybody in the audience would like to comment? Yes? Name and address, please.
Kristen Grabson with at 28 All Street. Some of my questions, or partial questions, were asked by you and answered. But I was just curious if what's customary for approving a yield? Is NRCS remote soil maps customary in other developments? Whether it was Caldwell Farm or other developments that the board has seen?
What we've done for Caldwell Farm, we did, it was a represent, I believe it was a representative number of perk tests that, you know, gave the board a level of comfort.
And are those, so it sounds like there have been soil tests done by Kamit? And whether that information could be provided on the map relative to the lots could be useful?
Yeah, what Kamit did is they kind of dug holes around and tried to find the best areas, you know, for the common leach fields. And then, once they found it, they focused in on it. Put lots of test pits in those areas. So, you know, they get a few scattered, but the main focus was on that. So what we're trying to do is use that information, plus the Soil Conservation Service maps, try to combine it together, which is very similar to what we did at Caldwell Farm.
And what size lots are in the...
There are no lots. It's condominium, there'll be single family condominiums.
I was just curious in your yield plan.
No, but I think asking...
Oh, exactly. Yeah, they were all 20,000 square feet or greater, according to the zoning bylaw.
Oh, they should be.
They should be. They have to match with the zoning bylaw. Right, that's right.
So all of that stuff, when you actually make a submission, will be shown on the plans?
Documents, it is.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's helpful. And it's, I mean, I guess it's, I think it's always helpful to have information from on the ground. And it sounds as though you have some resources on town staff to get some technical input on those particular soils. I'm just curious if they're really, you know, I don't know if they're spotty and there might not be a place I would park on that lot, which could affect your yield.
Yes, that's what we want to check with our engineer and also the Board of Health.
But it would also be helpful to have the location of those tested already for them to even consider it. I mean, to ask them to consider without that information seems like half, kind of half baked here.
I was thinking back to the other item that was in front of us for three or four months about the driving range. I mean, when that first came to us, it was a housing project. The yield plan, I think, had 28 units. And by the time they did their test pits, we'd taken three housing units out. So I mean, so it really does tell the, more than anything else, is just doing the real life test base. Anybody else have any comments or concerns?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate your concern with the demographics because it's something we've been talking about on the master plan. And we've seen it also in the rest of northern New England, where we are, New Hampshire being the oldest, it's the state that's got our oldest facets. People, young people will be out because they can't afford to stay here. That's an issue we have to deal with. Shepherd, that's a tough one. But I think as a town, we have to look at this and, no, Marshall Justerson, 1691 Street. But we have to look at what we are inviting and what we are supporting with the town, what we can do with the town long term to have a balance. Because we've seen, we had a study last year that was done in New Hampshire, where they literally are seeing towns collapse on themselves because they have no more, you know... Over 55 community developments went in with exactly the same rationale of, hey, this is good for the school system, you get taxes, you don't have to educate kids. And guess what? There are no kids around, there's no young people, they go somewhere else. There's a huge drain, especially in rural New England, of people who stay in town. And so that's a real concern for us in looking at that. I've been here for 40 years. When kids have grown up, are they going to be able to stay? And are their kids going to be able to stay? And I'm concerned about that. And so, that's why I'm...
I don't like it. We're not pushing it.
Oh, yeah.
We're something that's in the...
And I know you do, you do good work. I've seen your stuff all the way.
It's easier to do no age restriction because now you're in wider markets and...
Mr. Chairman, as you probably know, the federal statute on elderly housing allows 30% to be not restricted. However, all towns tend to just across the board impose 100% requirement of at least one accident day over 55. So if you end up on the middle ground, you could allow 30% of a project to be young people. So if there is a way that you can do it, should have laws.
And then it would be up to you, is that a good marketing tool? Do you know what I mean? It's, does that work for you from, from marketing? You know, 30%?
Yeah, well, the less restrictions, the better for marketing.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes?
Can I make one other comment?
Sure, you can.
And question, I guess, of the board. I think I heard that this property is in Chapter 61A. So, and I understand from the newspaper that it was presented to the selectmen, I wasn't at that meeting. But I'm curious what the planning board's opinion of the transition of an open space 61A property into a fairly densely developed...
Well, luckily, we're not asked for an opinion on that. Every once in a while, the town planner appears before the Board of Selectmen and gives some information. But they've never asked me my opinion. Am I right?
They probably, they probably will.
They probably will. So we haven't been asked?
Is that, I guess, has the select board made a decision on that or just given advice?
No, they didn't make any decision, you know, that has to go through the formal steps. Basically, they're looking at it as, you know, if they had to buy it, they'd have to buy it for the same price.
The opinion that we were asked is, does, can you think of a use that the town can make of the property? And if there is, they advise us to that extent. But it's not a, we don't think this should be developed. It's, is there a use that the town can use this property for? A library, a park, whatever it may be, a public facility? And be given an opinion of that?
A developed use or is open space a use?
Open, no, open space would be a non-developed use, but a library would be a developed use. I mean, so it's...
Yeah.
So we, but we have not been asked that opinion yet.
Not yet, because it hasn't formally been submitted.
I would offer as a nearby resident and someone who uses many of the trails that abut this property, that currently this piece of land is a very beautiful forested, open space wildlife habitat with wetlands and open fields and forests. And I think the impact of 26 units on that property would not only bring a lot of changes to the abutting properties, but also, you know, to that part of town, that neighborhood near Coleman's. And that's a concern I have.
Thank you.
Out of the 35 acres, I think it's like nine acres that would be part of the development. The rest of it would remain open space, which is what the town was looking at when we met with the selectmen, that they had the opportunity to get 23 acres of open space without buying anything.
So that reminds me. As you know, we're having some discussions with the HOA at Caldwell, who are reluctant to have the trail that was initially laid out. And so we continue to go back and forth. We've been going back and forth for about three years. So certainly as a precondition of this, we would require that the trail, any trails, be laid out ahead of time. And that the open space agreement and the use agreement with the town be established before any units could be sold.
The trail was built, I marked it out, laid it out for my guys and built it.
They don't think so.
They thought the other option would be the ownership of the open space. I think you can have the option of the town owning the open space. Rather than the association, which would eliminate the issue.
And we have easements for all of that. So that is something, and, and so have you thought that there would be active trails in it that would be open to the public?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You know, we did the same thing in English Commons and Topsfield, put trails in there.
Did you do it at Bartlett's too or not?
No.
No.
That wasn't really a big issue back then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It definitely wasn't an OSRD. Was it?
I don't know if they, well, Kyle Treship in Amesburg.
Oh, I didn't do that.
Yeah.
So anyway, you're open to having trails that are open to the public and that they be dedicated before the units are sold? And that we work out with you the best ownership way that they can be understood that the new owners don't have a conflict with this?
Well, I think the best way is the open space be taken over by the town.
By the town or by a nonprofit?
Right, well, you know...
Yeah, but then you get hiring people.
Right.
So I think that's the best way. Caldwell Farm, you know, the homeowners association owns the property. So that's where I think they have a little bit more fight than if the town lost ownership of the property.
Well, the other thing too is just putting trails on this property, unless they integrate with the other trails on the abutting properties, would also be important, obviously.
So...
So that it's not just, you know, going around in circles.
Governor's next to you guys?
Yeah, it's on the top right corner of the property up in there, yeah.
Okay.
Does it extend around?
Have you had any discussions with governors? Just out of curiosity.
With the governors?
Any discussions with the governors' folks? Okay. All right, anybody else have any comments?
I just have one.
Your name, please.
Kelly Yesser. The traffic with Triton? And would they be able to do anything, like a traffic light or anything where that intersection is?
You mean, not here, but down on Elm Street?
On Elm and Central, right where the...
I think that would come part of, as we get into this, whether or not an environmental review was required on the part of what we would require of the developer. And we just don't know that yet because we haven't had it submitted. So we'd have to do a traffic study. That's a good question. No other questions? I think we'll move ahead. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, George.
Caldwell Farms, in dealing with them, there's been an issue about what is described as a primitive trail. That trail was walking over rocks and without light. I think it has to be more defined and identified than that.
Unimproved, you know, meaning it's not stung dust or...
No, I understand.
Right. But it'd be a natural trail.
A natural woodland trail.
Yeah, rather than something that's, you know, machines gone through there and...
Right, and it's not like the rail trail. You know what I mean? It's not, it's not that.
I.D.Y.
Yeah.
Okay. You've done enough trails, Ray, you know?
I know we're primitive trails, yeah.
Primitive trails.
Some people have problems with that.
Okay, I was premature. Anybody else have any comments then? Nobody from the audience? Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I will look forward to seeing you again. Thanks, guys. We do have a, we had a time certain, starting our transportation section of the master plan, but we do have one last, one last issue. Mr. Long, Mr. Yesser, how are you? Mr., good to see you. Why don't you step forward and...
Well, Rob really did a lot of the work and he's really like the sub consultant for Orego.
Okay.
Working on this, so...
I think that maybe because of, and I apologize for the time, if you could highlight the differences between what we are aware of or were aware of a year or two, year and a half ago?
Sure.
And what has been changed? I think that's the best way. And then, are you officially submitting tonight?
Yes.
So what we're doing is we're accepting this proposal?
Yes.
And setting a public hearing?
Exactly.
Okay.
Would you like the various documents passed out at this plan? I'd be happy to. We have plan sets and formal application.
It might be just as easy to just kind of leave them there.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't you just...
I was sort of hoping I could bring them up and...
But just, we do have, we do have the application fee and also there's an escrow for legal counsel. And so I have checks for both of that.
Okay. Okay. What, okay.
All right, well, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Robert Rosie with Waterston Engineering. And I'm working on, as the applicant's representative, so the applicant being Borrego Solar, Steve Long, on behalf of the Yesser family. And just a kind of quick background, I'm sure everybody's more, pretty familiar with that. And we'll keep this very brief tonight. But this, what we're submitting tonight is a resubmission, a formal application for a special permit submission. And this, this project was initially submitted in June of 2015. And then, based on feedback and request for information from DEP, et cetera, the project was withdrawn in October of 2016 without prejudice. And at that point, we spent some additional time working through the project and resubmitted to DEP in December of 2016. And then through, and at that point, the project we had addressed two requests for information as well as feedback from abutters and the various concerns that had been included there. And the project was approved by DEP in April, late April of 2017.
Now, what did they approve? Did they approve what you're resubmitting?
That's exactly right. So what we are, what we're submitting to you is what was, what has been approved by DEP. So the superseding order of conditions. So through the various processes, there's an approval and order of conditions from the Conservation Commission that was appealed a while back. So with that, just to give you a little bit of highlight on what has been done since then. So since then, we have consulted with a habitat specialist on various concerns for tree clearing, critical habitat protection. And, and the project has been redesigned using current guidance recommended by the Army Corps of Engineers for development practices and best management practices around burlap pools. And at the time this project was approved by DEP, this was really the highest standard in the state for any project that DEP approved for solar at that point. So this project is essentially permitted by DEP under new draft standards that were applied to solar. So anywhere in the state, this would be the highest standard held. And I'd be happy to go into those details, but I don't think we will at this point. So the project really recognizes the possibility of burlap pools. And we'll talk about that, the reduction of tree clearing is associated with that. A number of the kind of strategies that we're working towards for reducing long-term impact would be both the prohibition of fertilizers and pesticides, prohibition of deicing chemicals. And then the development aspects that will minimize vegetative clearing during periods of time when we would expect amphibian migration to occur. So that's basically, what is that? That's, I think that would be May, June timeframe roughly. It's after, it's maybe April, May, June, but we'll, we'll be working with that. So basically, you have a couple of very warm nights and you can, you can expect when the amphibian migration will occur. And we'll be working around that time period. In addition to that, as part of the Army Corps Engineer Guidance, there's the establishment of unfragmented directional corridors. And as part of that, there is, the Yesser family is offering, will put 56.9 acres into long-term protection, conservation easement, which includes a combination of 34.3 acres of critical upland habitat as well as 22.6 acres of wetlands. The total project impact is 12.6 acres, which represents about an acre of reduced impact. And so feel free to stop me at any time if you have, you have questions as we go. So probably some of the most important differences, I think, that you've, that we've seen so far in this particular application is really the Conservation Easements, the use of Army Corps guidance in terms of how, how operations are being done. Some of that includes, so there'll be no disturbance with a 25-foot no disturb buffer. There are no structures within the 50-foot no build buffer. And there's a 100-foot separation from almost all burlap pools. And what else? For stormwater management. And in my practice, my expertise is low-impact development, green infrastructure. And I can tell you that in my, in my professional experience, I have honestly not, never seen a project that is this low-impact. And the reason being is we're talking 12.6 acres of 96 acres that essentially is being controlled here. You have these, the two residential houses here, which are relatively small impact, fairly large parcels, and almost 57 acres of conservation. That combined with the fact that the way DEP is permitting solar nouns, they're assuming it's an... it's an, they have us manage it as if it were an impervious surface, right? So if you imagine your rooftop being an impervious surface, and it certainly is, but the difference between your house or this building or this parking lot is you have an impervious surface that really masks the ground over it. So, but in the case of solar, we're treating it the same as a roof, the same as a parking lot, but you really have, you have an impervious surface, but then it runs on to impervious areas. So in my mind, and not that there's a problem with this, but this project is extremely protective because what we've done is we've designed it with infiltration trenches all throughout the site that will manage any potential runoff. And the best example of that actually is in the stormwater report, which talks about the recharge volume, actually, I won't play with the numbers. It's about nine times the amount of recharge volume is achieved through this.
Is that what you're carrying around? Is that in your hands? Is that the new submittal?
This is the special permit application.
Has all of the, okay.
Yeah. And what I'll be submitting to you, what we'll be submitting to tonight is the design sets, the special permit application, and then the stormwater management report that was through DEP.
Okay.
And intrusive, but other materials that you, that were not resubmitted, items that have not been resubmitted, that were part of the original application, is anything that hasn't changed. So some of that is like the wildlife habitat evaluation and some of these other pieces that will be on file with the Conservation Commission.
So your, this application though, is just a straight new application. Does it differentiate? This is how it differs from the original application? You do that in the application?
There is that, yes, absolutely, yeah. And what I'd like to show you with that is, so this is all intact, but here's what it actually looks like. So what we have initially, so the red outline is what the initial design would have looked like. And we've, and the green are the areas that have been pulled in. And then the various, the various panels here have been removed and placed over here in these particular areas.
So can you, can you give me, what was the rationale behind choosing the locations of which would be added and which would be subtracted?
Absolutely. So the, this particular area are areas of what we're basically calling potential vernal pools. There's the possibility of vernal pools up in here. It hasn't been confirmed, DEP, at the time that this was done, was not necessary for us to reassess this, but we treated it as such. So we've given it the benefit of the doubt. So treating essentially this whole upper area as being, as being potential vernal pools, we have applied these various restrictions. And the, and we, there's only three trees that would potentially go down actually in this area where that there, we are within 50, what could be considered a 50-foot buffer for the vernal pool. So rather than your typical 25-foot buffer. And with that, there's a substantial amount of tree reduction, tree clearing reduction, I should say, for a total of, whatever many trees we're looking at, I don't remember exactly, but it's a significant amount of trees. It's 1,400 trees or thereabouts.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
It'll take a while.
Let me ask you a question. The panels that are being removed?
Yes.
Any space at the bottom of your way, vernal line in the other corner?
Unfortunately not. The placement of the panels has everything to do with the amount of shading, the direction of the sun, et cetera, et cetera. So we cannot go any further down here without clearing more trees down on this end. And so what was actually done here, so this tree line hasn't moved, but what's being done in terms of clearing, what's being done in terms of screening is the planting of trees within the established, within the established trees. So there's, previously, there was some clearing that would have been done just essentially to add for screening value, right? So that we could put up a mid and under story. And now what's being done, and this is part of what we were working on with the wildlife habitat specialist, was to provide a low-story and mid-story screening in the midst of large mature trees. And that's what's being done along this line here.
We spent a decent amount of time on that. The reason George raised this is that you're putting arrays closer to the homes as opposed to away from the homes.
That's right.
And that's where, that's where we're getting pushed back from, so.
Yeah, that's right. And, and the, that's exactly right. But the screening has really been improved in this area and the areas that were...
So is that incre, I'm sorry for interrupting, but is that screening then in your plan and it shows you how, and what caliber of trees you're talking about, et cetera, and what species you're talking about?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And that part, if you recall, we've been asked to bring on the, somebody who could evaluate that, who was familiar with the appropriate tree species for that upland habitat. So that evaluation has been done. And there's roughly 60 trees or something that would be planted interspersed along this line in here.
Okay.
And that's, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Anybody have any other questions? Anybody?
I don't understand the, it looked like panels on the, more on the left in the upper part of the array that are not shaded in any way.
They would take it out.
They would take it out.
They would, that was the initial plan.
Yeah. So these, this basically shows the various iterations. You're kind of seeing three iterations here. This would be iteration one.
So they took them out.
But then the green says add it.
Yeah, yeah.
So you subtracted and added?
We did. We, yeah, right.
That's what I just asked them.
That's exactly right.
That's exactly what I just asked them. They took them out and then they put it back in when they removed the ones from the right-hand side, right near the vernal pools.
That's correct. And that's because initially this area was reserved for screening, so the trees would have, the screening would have been in this area, right? And...
It looks like the net of this though is that you are further back from the abutters.
From, from iteration one, absolutely. From iteration one, absolutely, not from iteration two. So iteration one would have been here, iteration two would have been here, and then iteration three was back a little bit more because of the vernal pool consideration. So the, essentially, the equivalent number of panels here, here, and here, we can find those in this location. Yeah, that's exactly right.
I have to be good at that. I'm just, I'd say one thing from the meetings, that it wasn't the distance so much, it was that you could see it. And I think what would be done now is provide more screening, better screening, so you will not be able to see them because the distance needs, it's substantial.
I thought it was a combination of distance and topography of where they were, and I just don't know where these are.
If you actually push a little further.
I mean, the topo in that area, as we walked it, I mean, some of it was, was up high and some of it was left.
This is essentially a ridge. Down into a flat, up into another ridge, right in this area.
Right, right, right.
That's right.
Okay. So anybody in the audience want to comment?
I'd just like, if I could show one other piece. So this, this shows the center area here in yellow. This essentially shows the entire project parcel. So this is the 96 acres that we're looking at. This is the 12 acres of impact that we're showing in the middle.
In mustard.
In mustard, yeah, yeah, absolutely. The red shows the two residential parcels, 136 and 138 Main Street. The green is the, is the upland habitat, so the critical upland habitat. This is, and this is, this is an important distinction in what the Corps of Engineers is looking for these days. One of the things that we recognize in terms of habitat, of wetland protection, a big limitation in wetland protection is, okay, so you protect the wetland, right? But the species only spend a portion of their lifespan in there. And they may go down there to gestate, but they may spend three-quarters of their lifespan in the uplands. And so we need to, we need to provide upland habitat conservation as well, but the Wetland Protection Act really doesn't get us that, right? Wetland Protection Act just gets you 25 feet past or whatever, whatever you need. So the fact that we're providing upland habitat here is of significant value and is really in keeping with what the Corps is looking for.
Thank you. Ron, name and address.
Ron Barrett, Hackensack, Oklahoma. Does solar put sunlight into anybody's house by reflection? Does solar make noise that's going to bother you?
No, I mean, as far as the neighbor goes, this should, you should have, this should be about the best neighbor that's going to go there. You're not going to have lights on at night. It's not going to make any noise. You know, there would, somebody will be out here maintaining the site a couple of times a year. But there's no, there's no pollution from vehicles or fertilizers or pesticides or any of this. And you know you shouldn't be seeing this from your house. I mean, it's 12 acres nestled in the middle of 90 acres.
Now, the homes, where, how close are the homes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know you can't see that. Let me turn this a little bit here.
The homes are right there.
This is our, these are the closest homes, and I don't remember exactly the scale, but what I think we're looking at is 475 feet, is that right?
Yeah, substantial distance from the home.
But like if you put agro, agro, like a, a, a...
Arbivite, and that's actually one of the, one of the bunches that's in there.
But if you put a row of those close together, like I have them on one of my properties, you cannot see through that.
That's right.
Is that part of the project?
Absolutely.
For the home model?
Yeah. That's part of the revegetation plan, if I can remember what that is, the tree.
So at that point, you wouldn't see a fence and you wouldn't see the glass of the solar panels?
Actually, the homes at that point are looking at the back of the solar panels on the glass to the right.
No, but if you put up the arbivites?
Then you don't see anything.
Then you wouldn't see anything?
You shouldn't.
And there's no noise? There's no reflection?
Yeah.
When I worked on solar and wind turbines for the town, our biggest problem was wind turbines making a reflection and some that mahum. But we had no problem with solar, other than people not liking it next door. And how do you shade that away from them? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah. All these panels face south, which the homes are over on, over right here. So they could be looking really at the back of the side of them, so they're not going to get any glare. And the panels don't really glare. They're made to absorb light, so they really don't glare. We've installed these at airports, so they've done glare studies.
Well, they're in people's roofs.
Right. Well, we've installed these at airports on, right next to the landing field. So, I mean, they don't produce glare that's going to blind you. You will see them, but we're going to screen these houses with plantings. The tops of these, these are mounted on racks on the ground. And then the panels go up from there and they're tilted south. And the highest point is going to be approximately nine to 10 feet.
Now, when we were talking about wind turbines, because wind turbines put out a lot more power, you put it out 24 hours a day. If you put a 1.8 out, it'll do 800 homes and you can have one.
Ron, I think we've got a lot of stuff to go over. Maybe. We have, we're going to schedule a public hearing. We'll definitely answer all those questions. So I think, I don't think we want to get that detailed.
We need to set a meeting for the public hearing. And we need to vote to accept it and then set the meeting, so.
Who is the applicant?
Yeah. Beregal.
Beregal Systems?
Beregal Solar Systems.
Part of what they...
Vote to accept first and then let's set the date. Two motions.
I move to accept the plans for a 2,700 M, 95 megawatt solar power energy generating system at 136 Main Street in Ifield.
I have a second one. Any comment on it before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second one.
Okay. I've got the date in time.
I think it's the 6th, am I right?
Did you check on that? Does that work for you?
I have something in the day, but I think the night will probably work. But what are our options?
That's our first. That's our first meeting in December.
December 6th.
I'd rather do the 13th, but it's more open.
Or rate it, we need to have six in the meeting.
See books.
Unless you want to change.
A thousand. I'll come dressed as Sam's suit if you do on the 6th instead of the 20th.
Now, we don't...
Is that an incentive?
But we just think we could do the 13th. Oh, you want dates, 6th, 6th to 20th. And you need, right, you need to check yours too, because that would be going to be... All right, let's do the 6th. Okay, it's the 6th, all right.
The 6th, okay, that's...
I'll make a board.
Okay.
7:15.
The 6th at 7:15 will be the public hearing. Okay? Thank you.
So the board will vote on that?
Yeah.
I move to set the public hearing on this matter for December 6th at 7:15 P.M.
I have a second. Any comment on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mark, can I offer to help carry this stuff?
Um, you know, I've got a cart downstairs, so I'll take it.
You sure? Okay. All right.
Thanks all. Yeah.
Now, do we get to call you for the Sam's suit for the 6th?
Well, actually.
Everyone bring some chairs up.
We should have swift and productive evening.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
Good luck, questions. Appreciate it.
So, have a question. I have a second. No discussion. All those in favor?